Well. You want to read the long spiel?
I sure will. It's a shortened long spiel though, so that's a good thing.
Good.
This open meeting of the Men and Select Board is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's updated guidance on holding meetings pursuant to the Act extending certain COVID-19 measures that was signed into law on June 16th, 2021. This act includes an extension until April 1st, 2022 of the remote meeting provisions of his March 12th, 2020 executive order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. For this meeting, the Men and Select Board is convening by video telephone conference as posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. This meeting will feature public comments. Back to you, Mark.
Thank you, Laura. Still waiting on Lonnie here, but. We don't have much on the agenda that doesn't require all of us, so. Well, are there any citizen statements and petitions? Of course not. There he is. Okay, so let's get started. We have received a recertified budget from Men and Upton Regional School District. The number is three hundred and twenty thousand and change. And so our discussion this evening is to discuss whether we are looking towards a special town meeting as a board and discuss the budget that would be required to meet the $320,000 request. So Kim, I know you've been working on this issue for some time. Do you want to talk to this and what you've kind of been working on?
Sure, I mean, it's it's kind of early because we're not sure exactly, you know, what the board feels about what type of spending they want to do. We haven't had a discussion yet in public, and I apologize for sounding like this, but I guess, you know, I have bronchitis. And so anyway, we've been putting lists together this entire time from the eight hundred thousand to the four hundred thousand and now to the three hundred and twenty thousand. Unfortunately, no matter which direction we go, it looks like there are still going to at three hundred and twenty thousand, there are still going to have to be significant changes in service level to the town. You know, that's about 4% of our overall budget. And the board has been pretty clear about not wanting to use, at least members of the board, one-time funds. And so really, I think now it's it's just a balancing act about what the board wants to try to salvage and prioritize for the next fiscal year and, you know, to basically, you know, see based upon our operations, you know, where we can do the least amount of damage to go forward.
Right. So I think, you know, from conversations that we've had with with the school committee, not as a board, but, you know, they're they've they've been very willing to to work with the town to find a resolution that does not mean a joint town meeting. And so this action by the school committee to reduce their number by making adjustments to their budget kind of prompts in my mind the need for us to act and to address this through a special town meeting of our own to avoid a joint town meeting with Upton involved. So tonight we have on our agenda that we would set a date for the special town meeting and set the warrant. And so I think that the timing of that meeting is to be as soon as possible with an efficiency in mind that we need to be first following the law, which requires at least two weeks' notice to the public. And then we have to be realistic about timing of sending out notices to every household in the town amendment. So with that, I think that an ideal timeframe would be either August early in the week of the ninth, ninth, tenth, or eleventh. I think we have a history of of having our special town meetings in midweek, which I think makes sense for the summer months as well. I mean, we all know there's no great, there's no good, yeah, go ahead, Cindy.
I am, I'm sorry if I already answered this, but I'm a little confused. Didn't they set a joint town meeting date already?
Yes, they did for August 6th, which the school committee has discussed moving that date to accommodate the special town meeting.
Okay. And and the hope is to do what exactly?
We would fund their requested recertified budget at three hundred and twenty thousand.
And by going to a special town meeting and hoping to avoid a joint town meeting, you're hoping to go to town meeting and get the money approved at that number?
Correct.
And and what's the reasoning for wanting to do it independent of the joint town meeting?
Oh, I don't think we want to have the the fanfare of a joint town meeting where you have Mendon and Upton voters going at it to for something that we can accomplish on our own and avoid the the longer term repercussions of of damaging relations between our two communities.
Okay. And the the school committee will definitely change the date?
Yes, they met last evening and their conversation was they were going to change the date and pushed it out to the 14th. But we decided that they were gonna wait to see what our date was, and then they would adjust their date based on what we do tonight.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Do either Selectman Marali or Selectman Tenio have any any comments?
I would I would say that the the sooner the better to to schedule the special town meeting. And and I would also say that, you know, I would I would still like to explore other avenues than than cutting town services. I would not have a problem with finding one-time funds with the understanding, as as the school committee said last night, we're gonna start on the budget, their budget, right away. Because I'm I'm I don't necessarily think that it means that that same money is going to have to be spent next year with the understanding that this is a one-time thing because of COVID. And I, if we move forward and we can't find a way to do it within the levy limit, then understanding that next year there would definitely have to be cuts. But I think this is a special situation, and I would prefer to find ways, and I've actually reached out to Congressman McGovern's office. And I forwarded some information to to both the other members of the board, and I would like to explore that. I I think we can definitely set a set a meeting date tonight, and I think we can, you know, come up with a warrant article. But as usual, we don't always have all the funding sources and all this, everything squared away as soon as we publish the warrant. So I'd like a little bit of time. I think we have a little bit of time in between then to discuss it, but that's my that's that's my feeling.
Right. Okay. Cindy?
I know I'm vocal tonight, sorry. I I just want to say I agree with Selectperson Marali that your warrant article needs to be broad enough to cover everything you may want to do, but you do not need to have all the specific funding items laid out in the warrant. You want to leave yourself some latitude and flexibility. But keep in mind that when you actually get to town meeting floor, you will have to approve funding for that three twenty.
Yeah, so it so it would be like any other any other special town meeting?
Yes.
Right. Go ahead, Lonnie.
Yeah, I mean, I know we don't need to discuss this now, but I definitely wouldn't be in favor of using one-time funds for this. And I'm not sure how this doesn't trans how this translates to next year is them starting off at a lower number, meaning that there would be $320,000 lower than it is right now. That the school committee would start that low, meaning they would cut everything that's there they're either keeping or adding now. I'm not sure either how, unless I've completely missed something in the meetings, I'm just not sure how this year because of COVID is the issue with with why we're at where we're at. And that it would be any different next year with the budget starting. I understand starting early to talk about the budget is one thing, but I would expect that there would be just more added next year. And maybe I'm totally wrong and I'm misunderstanding something, so I apologize if I am. I also am of the opinion that that these this three hundred and twenty is still, you know, more than double what we had discussed as as a number that was still going to involve cuts. And I feel that we should just go to joint town meeting at this point. And and as painful as it may be, I just, that's my opinion, so that that's that, I don't have much more than that on on the topic at the moment.
Cindy?
Sorry about this, guys. One thing I had mentioned at one point to Kim, and I don't know if I had mentioned it in front of the whole board, is there may be a way that you can phrase your warrant article so that, and it may not even be something you want to consider, but that so you could have a number, you approve the three twenty, and you approve where the money is coming from, unless you were to then put forth an override if that were for some or a portion of it, if that's what you wanted to do. You couldn't condition your approval of the budget on an override. You would have your funding, but if you did want to have that as a possibility to avoid some of your cuts if it were to pass, you could potentially do that. I'm not saying it's what you want to do or not, but, you know, as long as you have a finite vote that appropriates money to cut the three to cover the three twenty increase, they'll then the budget request has been met and it's not contingent. But that doesn't mean that if the board were to decide that they may want to not have cuts and may want to see if an override was a possibility, that's not off the table legally. It may be politically off the table or policy-wise or for any other number of reasons, but just echoing off of what Lonnie said about cuts that, you know, that is most likely the way you're going to go and most likely what will happen, but it's not legally the obligation. The obligation is to meet the certified budget number.
Right.
Mark, I had one other thing too.
Go ahead.
Part of my reason, part of my reason for thinking this way is that I know it's been brought up a couple of times that that the feeling is that the taxpayers voted not to raise their taxes but not to send money to the school. I would just caution on that statement as the ballot both times specifically stated to fund the money, the additional money for the school, specifically stated that.
Okay. You know, I am un- understanding that that we should not be using one-time funds for the for these cuts, I think, or to meet this request. I think that we have the ability to to make some concessions and and make some cuts to service levels that aren't going to completely decimate our operations. They're going to alter our operations, but I don't feel that it's enough that we need to be using one-time funds and putting ourselves in a hole right off the bat for next year. I think that going forward, we we make the cuts and then we look to see how we can manage to fill those those cuts in the future. But starting off now with one-time funds puts us back even further than we already are. And I I do understand the feeling of of why using one-time funds to float up this year may be of the opinion of some, but I just wanted to offer my my position on that. Okay. Shall we set the date for the special? Do we think midweek is appropriate with the August 10th?
Is is there a reason that we don't want to do it the week before? Is that just too soon? Is that?
Yeah, I think it really is too soon because there's some there's some issues with the crier. We're going to utilize the the town crier to get that message out, and the crier goes out on August 6th, I believe.
Right. But there is no requirement about how soon before the meeting it gets in everybody's hands. In other words, if it went out on 6th, then that net select, I I think what you said, so in other words, the week of the ninth. Yeah, well, I I think that's that's.
I think Michelle is on here on the call now, but I won't put her on the spot. But today she told me that if we got it in by the end of the week, this week potentially, she wasn't certain that it could go out for distribution on the 6th. But another option we always have is direct mailers to households. And I would actually defer to Laura on that about how much time she would need to organize and work to get all of it together, printed and out. That's really the biggest issue here.
Kim, I'm looking at the calendar for the crier and they, let me just go back to it. Hold on one second. Let us see. I just lost it. Bear with me one second.
Michelle also sent me a text last night and told me the same thing she told you, Kim, that, you know, the frag goes out on the 6th. So.
The deadline to have the insert to the crier is the 27th, but I'd need to get it printed a couple of days beforehand by our town printer, and and they're right next door, they can walk it over. So I could see, you know, if they can take it by Monday.
And then the other issue is we are opening the warrant, but we don't have the actual warrant to approve tonight, so we need to get that accomplished promptly as well.
Okay.
So we're looking at, I think the week of the ninth is is an appropriate time. Ninth, or is it the eighth? Yeah, ninth, 10th, or 11th.
Yeah, Monday, August 9th is. Is there any thought between the between those three days of nine, 10, or 11, which one is better? Because I'll I'll certainly make the motion for whatever one the other two.
Don't we also need to make sure that the moderator is available?
Hmm. Yeah, I can, I'm I'm he's chopping at the bit, so he's.
Okay, I'm just saying that's a crucial piece of scheduling meeting.
A good point, let me.
See if you can hook us up with that, Mike.
In the meantime, Jay, do you want to, you have something to add here?
Yeah, hi, everybody. Just from the school perspective, the sooner the better, and I think it's been stressed enough. So if you're going for the week of the ninth, I mean, to me, I would encourage you to set it for that Monday, the ninth, or maybe Tuesday, the 10th. But I mean, we're sort of in limbo here, and we've got school opening at the end of August, and you can't set schedules schedules for students. So you know what you're going to have for staff, and we don't know what we're going to have for staff till we get an approved budget. So we're kind of in this, you know, this mysterious state here of trying to figure out how to deal with all this. So the sooner the better is what I would encourage you, if at all possible.
Yep. Aaron, you have comments to add while we're waiting for our moderator? Not getting anything from Karen, yep.
Well, Michelle, when she comes back. So Cindy, my question is, is this as simple as making a motion that says the board approves a warrant pending council approval, and it's basically one article? And it's the budget, Article Four?
I'm not sure that what you said is specific enough, or if you were using shorthand. You need a warrant article that basically gives people notice of what you're doing, which is to see if the town will vote to approve the $320,000 increase in the school committee budget and to appropriate funds to pay for it or to take any other action relative thereto, something to that effect. I mean, you have to say the purpose of the town meeting, which is to approve the the recertified budget, right?
Okay, and so for the individual motions on the floor, since we're waiting, is it as simple as every motion has to every? So we need to do the one about things being out of order, correct? Because that one also is about the budget being balanced, right? But that's important. And then we need full modifications on all the votes on the floor, correct? So everything has to add back up. It can't just be yes, this, no, that. Like, I'm just trying to play this out in my head, like, I know we just said we weren't going to use one-time funds, but if somebody wanted to or something happened on the floor, do we need a separate motion for the use of stabilization or something like that because it's two-thirds? Like, what do we need to be telling people? How do we communicate what the options are?
That would, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, sorry.
Lonnie, go.
I I would I would have to say that if somebody makes an amendment on the floor, they have to write the amendment. If it's to take it from stabilization, that amendment gets voted on as a two-thirds vote. I I think that, you know, we should have the standard articles, like you said, Kim, that we need. But I don't think there's anything anything necessary other than what we were saying, way we would do Article Four. And hopefully that we'll have a list and we can go down the list and do a hold. If anybody wants to hold it, we can discuss it and make an amendment and and go from there. But essentially, we should be able to do it in that format, I would assume.
Well, I also too, because I've heard things about undoing votes at previous town meetings about the use of free cash. And I'm wondering, like, does that need a separate article? Because that's a totally different situation.
What was your vote?
I don't think, we don't have free cash. It's not certified yet. Are we talking about last year's free cash?
Yeah, it's gone. So I just want to, I'm trying to be clear about what's actually possible in this meeting, right? That we've thought of all the things and we've gone through it. Like, we, the mechanisms are, these are the actual sources that we can use, and this is the mechanism to do it.
Let me, let me just, first of all, a couple of things. The the moderator is going to be at Treasure Collector School on August, Tuesday, August 10th, for the rest of that week. So he's saying that Monday, August 9th is his day that would work. So if we can, if we can pick that day, that Monday night, that would be that would be preferable to him because that's when he's he's in town. The second, I, the the second thing, I think, Kim, I I, and you know, I mentioned to Kim the idea of possibly, the way to come up with funds was to take ARPA funds or Biden bucks and substitute things that had been appropriated at the at the annual town meeting. And and after talking to somebody at Jim McGovern's office today, I would not be in favor of that. That's not possible. The only way would be, like Lonnie said, is this Article Four, right? So if we do anything, it's whatever we do, it's got to be moving money within, you know, within Article Four, within the existing budget. Even if we had to take ARPA money and plow it in, then, you know, I think we could accomplish it all within it. So it seems like the article needs to be, we we would need to have an article that amends the budget that we did pass at the annual town meeting, and it all needs to be within that. And and just like Lonnie said, if for some reason somebody wanted to take money out of stabilization somehow, I I don't know if we would put that within the article, and there would have to be a two-thirds vote or, but but that's not, you know, and the last thing I'll say is, make no mistake, I am not in favor of any kind of a two and a half override for town services. And I realize that there may be no choice but to reduce services as a result of this money. I just want to explore all options first, and that's all I'm suggesting.
Right.
Hold on, I I go, sorry, can I clarify? I just want to clarify something. We're not, and maybe it's just the way that it's being presented. We're not reopening Article Four. Our budget's been, the budget's been passed, we are now in the budget. All we're doing is moving money between line items. We're taking them from from a line item and moving it to the school line item. So I I just don't know if we're overthinking this sucker.
Well, no, Lonnie, I would, I and and I'll ask counsel, but I believe even changing line items, obviously, when we pass the budget, right? We try to pass it as a whole piece, but we go, we read through each line and then people hold, right? So I would think in this case, the way it would start is the motion would be to, you know, read the line items within the budget that are going to change because we're going to have to do that, right? We're going to have to change the line items. I realize the bottom line may or may not change, but I I'm in agreement. We're not going to be changing the whole budget around, but I think we have to, we do have to, for lack of a better word, edit the budget because not all the money is going to all the line items the way that it was. But I think the same page about the philosophy.
Cindy?
I was gonna say, you do, if if your budget passed with all the different line items, you would be going in to amend a line item that you want to change. And that's what you would be doing. But if, say, someone wants to propose stabilization or something, that would be an independent motion to pick up a portion of the the charges. So I I think we've got to be careful of, I know the preferred approach is to transfer all of this money from existing line items in the approved town budget. But you have to also leave open the ability that you may get a groundswell for stabilization. And you can't foreclose that if you risk that people won't give up line item X. You know, you have to make sure you keep your options open, and you can structure them in such a way so that you go through the line items, and then maybe only if there's a shortfall, we look at this. You just have to be very careful that you leave yourself the ability to make sure that whatever happens on town meeting floor, and we've all been around long enough to know anything can happen on town meeting floor, that you have the capacity to end up meeting the three twenty.
Right.
Or else it's not going to be what you want.
Right. Ellen, you have your hand up? You're on.
Nope.
I just want to make sure, you know, if we're going to do August 9th, I will need that signed warrant to post by Monday, the 26th, the latest. Has to post that day.
Okay. We have Jay?
Yeah, don't we, every time we have a fall special town meeting in November, isn't there sometimes articles that transfer X amount of dollars from line item this to line item that? So it's, we're doing the same thing. I don't think you're opening up Article Four. So your warrant motion should basically be reading to appropriate funds from available sources to fund the operational budget of the Men and Upton Regional School District, and that can cover it, right? Then the motion itself is going to be, you know, to transfer $320,000 and change from line item this, line item, line item this, to these other line items. Because as you, you know, don't forget, you're going to have to adjust the minimum local. Because as you, you know, don't forget, you're gonna have to adjust the minimum local contribution line item because it went up, which means your operational additional is gonna go down, but it seems like we do this all the time. This isn't a new thing that we're trying to do now. I think we just follow the same type of procedure you've done in some of your November special town meetings.
Well, I have a a question, Jay, Mr. Mr. Chair, if it's okay. If the if if the minimum local contribution went up, but it still didn't go up by the three hundred and twenty-one thousand, then that that's immaterial, right?
Well, I it's up to how you do your bookkeeping. If you charge a specific line item when you pay like the assessment, you'll go over on your minimum local contribution unless you match it to what the actuality is. Doesn't really matter. You're right, because in the end, it's the total net cost that you're paying and whatever line it comes out of, who really cares?
Um, yeah, and then as far as what I I think what what Lonnie and I were both saying is we we may not have to, we we don't have to go through every line in the budget. But but the article would certainly have to address, you know, funding sources transferring from which art from which uh line in the budget to which, you know, to the to the school line to to meet the three twenty-one.
Right.
And I suppose there would, and of course, the other issue is if if anybody's gonna take money from from some other source, it would all have to be within that one article, right? So there's not like there can be a second article that takes money out of free cash, out of uh stabilization because we haven't, if we don't put that on the warrant, uh unless, you know, unless somebody was to like do a citizen's petition to sign it and there's a deadline for all of that too, I think, so.
No, I I think ultimately, though, you're gonna have a motion. So you're gonna have a warrant article that says you're gonna, you know, fund the operational budget and that covers it. When you your motion is gonna be very specific. We're gonna raise and appropriate X amount of dollars by transferring this line item to this line item. And then somebody can get up and say, I, you know, I don't wanna take money from that account. I'd like to amend that and take that money from stabilization. You then act on the amendment. If it passes, that's how it then reads. So you still only have one motion.
Right.
I think it's it's much simpler than we than you're thinking. I think you you're overcomplicating it.
So what I'd like to do, because we don't have the language written as we need it to be yet, we need to have um him and Cindy and Laura get that accomplished. And then we need to have a brief meeting to close the warrant and approve it. And then we go and have it printed and go from there. Sound good?
Works for me.
We're looking at, we're looking at the ninth, um, so I'll take a motion for that.
So Mr. Mr. Chair, I moved, we schedule a special town meeting for uh Monday, August ninth, twenty twenty-one, and to open the special town meeting warrant, and I so move.
Is we gonna, Lonnie gonna second or no? Maybe not. No, okay, so I'll second that. All in favor?
Marali, aye.
Real aye, all opposed.
Tenio, aye.
Okay.
Do we do we need a time? What time are you gonna do it? In the motion, he didn't say what time the meeting would be.
Seven o'clock?
Yeah.
Thank you.
You want me to read, you want me to read that?
I would have it earlier.
Earlier?
I would have it earlier. If possible.
Six o'clock?
I'm thinking six o'clock.
Let me, let me, let me restate the motion. I'm gonna schedule a special town meeting for Monday.
And where? And is it available?
August ninth at six P M. Uh, August ninth, twenty twenty-one at six P M uh to be held at available space within the town of Mendon, Massachusetts, zero one seven five six.
Perfect.
And to open the special town meeting warrant. And I so
Someplace, someplace in Mendon that night.
Right.
At the drive-in. We'll have it at the drive-in.
I would, I would assume the school is available because there is no school inception and there's gotta be somewhere on that property that
And they'd like us to have this meeting.
Mark, I guarantee you, we will have a space in the school. Guarantee it.
Okay.
If no, nobody sells my office.
Motion was made, seconded, um, all in favor?
We're all aye. Yeah.
Tenio, aye.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else? Tim, do we need a executive session?
We should, based upon these new numbers, we should talk about the impacts on staffing.
All right, hold on. So I moved entered into executive session under purpose three, the Mass General Act, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Mendon Town Hall Union, Local two seventy-two, Mendon Highway Department Union, Local two seventy-two, Men Mass Coalition of Police Union, AFL CIO, Local one eighty-eight, Mendon Fire, to discuss an open session, maybe that's the Mendon for bargaining. We will reconvene only to a
Second.
Hey, all in favor?
Tenio, aye.
Marali, aye.
Real aye.